Hafadeh, welcome to the Guam Congress Building. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is now called to order. Today's Monday, January 8, 2024, and it's about 1:05 PM. In compliance of the open government law, notices for this public hearing were published in the Guam Daily Post and posted to the government of Guam Public Notice Portal on Friday, December 29th and Friday, January 5th. Notices were also sent by email to all senators and to all main media broadcasting outlets. This hearing is being live streamed on the Guam Legislature's YouTube channel. Individuals testifying, I ask that you first be recognized by the chair and state your name for record-keeping purposes, so we can make our transcripts very accurate. In an effort to minimize distractions, while someone is testifying, I ask that you please refrain from moving around while they're testifying, and we've asked protocol to keep the doors quiet. Individuals who are presenting oral testimony are invited to also submit written testimony to ensure that their input is accurately transcribed. After testifying, panelists will only be allowed to speak again in direct response to questioning or invitation of a senator who has the floor or at the discretion of the committee chair. So we have several agenda items for this afternoon. At 1 PM, right now, we're going to have the reappointment hearing of Ronald T. Leguanyan to serve as a member of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission for four years, from September 18, 2023 to September 17, 2027. At 2:30, we will have a hearing on Bill Number 222-37COR. It's an act to reserve lot number 2417-1R7, the former Department of Public Health and Social Services' main building in Magnila for immediate use by the Department of Public Health and Social Services. At 4 PM, we're having a hearing on two bills. Bill Number 153-37LS, sponsored by Frank Blas Jr., Thomas J. Fisher, Duane T. De Sinecules. It's an act to add a new subsection 80.37B to Article 2, Chapter 80, Title IX, Guam Code annotated, relative to the possession or use of an explosive or an improvised explosive device in the commission of a felony. And Bill Number 155-37LS, sponsored by Senator William A. Parkinson, is an act to add a new chapter 164 to Title VIII, Guam Code annotated, relative to attendance of witnesses, and to cite this act as the uniform act to secure the attendance of witnesses from without a state in criminal proceedings. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of my colleagues. Oops, she just walked out, Senator Tello Tytegui and Senator Joanne Brown. Thank you, colleagues, for being here today. All right, so we'll begin with the appointment here of Mr. Ronald T. Leguanyan, a member of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. We'll first hear from those who want to testify, either for or against, in the order that they signed out, and then finally, we'll hear from the nominee himself. So I'll call up Mr. John Birch, who is the executive director of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission, Mr. Fred Bredalio, he is the director of the Department of Corrections, Mr. Ron Eclavea, he's the chairperson of the Guam Ancestral Lands, Severina Athalik from the Marianas Agupat Talk Show, David Herrera, Vincent Minatoya, Minatoma, Ronald Leguanyan, oh, sorry, Ron, you will be the last one, Jeanette Tytenow, May Ada Earl Garido. If I call your name and you're just, you don't want to testify, that's okay, too. Ben Pablo and David Duñez. All right. We have a lot of dignitaries in our room today. Thank you for being here. All right, just a reminder that the Ancestral Lands Commission has many duties according to our statute. They are responsible for establishing five separate registries for the purposes of recording the information in the settlement of ancestral claims. One is the original landowner's registry. It's the record at the time of the taking of whose properties were confiscated. It's going to be used for the purpose of confirming an applicant's claim. Number two is the excess lands registry. This is a listing of all lands that have been declared excess by the federal government, including those that may be declared access in the future by the government of Guam. This is for the purpose of determining which lots the commission may use as just compensation in extinguishing ancestral claims. The claims registry is a listing of all claims to ancestral title filed by applicants. The conditional awards registry and the ancestral title registry, a listing of applicants granted land title in return for the surrender of all their ancestral property claims. The commission is allowed to investigate, authorized to investigate, record, file, report and respond to requests by ancestral land claimants for remedy, including the government of Guam, whose land was taken by the United States or by the government of Guam on or after January 1, 1930. Remedy includes just compensation, as defined in 80101 of this act, which for purposes of this chapter is defined as limited to the return of land or access to landlocked lots across public lands if public lands block access to private property. The commission shall establish, in accordance with the administrative adjudication law, written procedures for extinguishment of claims, awards and recordation of ancestral land title. All right. Mr. Birch, please state your name, and if you're testifying in an official capacity, please state that capacity.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and Hafadeh, Senator Brown and Senator Tytegui. My name is John Birch. I'm the executive director of the Guam Ancestral Commission, and I am testifying in my professional capacity as the executive director. I'm writing and I'm here to testify, to express my support for the nomination of Mr. Ronald T. Leguanyan, to continue serving as a member and as vice chairman of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. Having closely observed Mr. Leguanyan's dedication and commitment to the welfare of the Chamorro people, I firmly believe that his reappointment to the commission is crucial to the continual progress and preservation of ancestral lands. Mr. Leguanyan has been an unwavering advocate for the rights and interests of the Chamorro people throughout his tenure on the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission, which spans over 20 years since the year 2002. As a current vice chairman of the commission, he has demonstrated exceptional leadership and a deep understanding of the historical and cultural significance of ancestral lands. His extensive experience and continued service make him an exceptional candidate for this position. Beyond his professional accomplishments, Mr. Leguanyan is a compassionate and understanding individual who genuinely cares about the well-being of his community. He actively engages with local organizations and community members to address their concerns, and he works tirelessly to find equitable solutions. His approachability and willingness to listen to different perspectives ensure that the diverse voices of our community are heard and respected. In conclusion, I wholeheartedly support the reappointment of Mr. Ronald Leguanyan to the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. His exceptional leadership as the vice chairman, dedication to the Chamorro people, and over two decades of experience on the commission make him the ideal candidate to continue serving in this critical role. I have full confidence that under Mr. Leguanyan's continued guidance, the commission will thrive in its mission to safeguard the ancestral lands and promote the well-being of our community. I thank you for considering my testimony and support of Mr. Ronald Leguanyan's nomination. I trust that his reappointment will bring immense value to the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission and contribute to the preservation of our cultural heritage for generations to come. Sisus Massey.
Sisus Massey, Director Birch. Director Bredalio?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Speaker, Honorable Senator Theresa Terlaihi, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Tello Tytegui. My name is Fred Bredalio Jr. from the village of Santorin, and I'm here personally to support the appointment, reappointment of Ronald Leguanyan to the Guahan Ancestral Lands Commission. I personally know Ronald, he's alumni of JFK, and you know, we know about what the president said, John F. Kennedy, January 20, 1961. He said, "Ask not what your country can do for you, but ask what you can do for your country." And the thing about that of what Ronald does is in his passion to serve the people of Guam as a member of this commission is very important, and he takes that very seriously as a member of this commission. We hear a lot of, you're gonna hear a lot of praise on what Ronald's done in terms of his impact on his students as a teacher at Guam Department of Education, and he's retired in the preservation of the Chamorro culture, and also as a member of the Young Men's League of Guam, which I was a member of, where I know Ronald's very passionate in ensuring that these lands, the Ancestral Lands Commission, that the policies that happened there, it's transparent. And I'm just gonna make it short and just say, I trust Ronald, and I think the people of Guam will trust Ronald and his capacity as a member of the commission, you're gonna hear that, so I wanna support him here today, and I ask each and every member of the Guam Legislature to support him and reappoint him to this commission. Thank you. Sisus Massey.
Sisus Massey, Director Bredalio. And I note that you were testifying in a personal capacity.
Yes.
Thank you. And the chairperson of the Ancestral Lands Commission, Mr. Ron Eclavea.
Sisus Massey, Speaker Terlaihi, Senator Brown and Senator Tytegui. My name is Ron Eclavea. I'm from the village of Joln, and I'm the chairman of the Ancestral Lands Commission. I had the pleasure of working with Vice Chairman Leguanyan for practically 20 years, and I cherish the time that I've been there. I've learned from him a lot. His finesse with the Chamorro language and his etiquette with the Chamorro culture, we all know and we envy. I, for one, have appreciated his service and his tenacity and his emphasis in the Chamorro people, its culture, preserving the culture, and of course, the mission of the Ancestral Lands Commission. He is practically second to none. I urge you, I'd like to also echo the thoughts of both directors, Bredalio and Mr. Birch, and I urge you to support his renomination to this commission. I thank you for hearing my testimony. Sisus Massey.
Sisus Massey. Mr. Herrera, also a commissioner of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission, and I think the chairperson now. Sisus Massey.
Buenos dias. En honor de la vida de Herrera, no tao hagatzu, za tumistiti guzu, gi sibit na banda, gi private presentation pressi Ron. Es mofatuzut para be hu suputi, si Ron gi esti paruma no appointment gi Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. Te be taita isti gi finu englis, pu no be lazi sa no ti prakti guzu gi finu englis, lo ifinut Chamorro sinha no. Fezesta no, no, buenos anhafadeh, Madam Speaker, and members of the Committee on Land, Senator Tytegui and Senator Joanne Brown, no sisus massey. The following is my testimony in favor of the reappointment of Signor Ronald T. Amaga Leguanyan to serve as a member of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission that was created by Guam Public Law 25-45. That's with the responsibility to convey federal excess lands to original landowners, once returned to the government of Guam, and is considered the land claims facilitator. Signor Ron Amaga Leguanyan is an esteemed trusted, trusted chetlu of the nation Chamorro, ever since we first met after 30 years ago in 1995, during the live-in protest days in front of the Adeluk compound in an effort to stop the touch-and-go flight operation at Naval Air Station in Tizen. And also, we protested to implement the Public Law 12-226, which is the Chamorro Land Trust Commission that was authored by Senator Paul Budodze, and to develop the rules and regulations, and to repeal the land-for-the-landless program that was established, and to establish the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. Fast forward to 30 years today, in January of 2024, Signor Ron Amaga is a stronger, more seasoned advocate of the inefresi, not only in words, but in action, and most importantly, and uniquely in the spirit of our guelus, also known as the aniti of our tautomonas, a meditational mantra the nation practices up to this day. The inefresi is the Chamorro pledge of allegiance that was completed or that was composed by the late Dr. Bernadita Camachidunka in 1991, and it's a guideline that is valued by Signor Ron Amaga. The nation and numerous cultural members of our community pledging to protect and defend the belief, the culture, the language, the air, the water and the land of the Chamoros. In closing, Madam Speaker and esteemed members of the Committee on Land, to please support the reappointment of Signor Ronald T. Amaga Leguanyan to the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. Don Kuluna sisus massey.
Agomas. Signor Herrera? Vincent? Press that button, yeah, when the light comes on, there you go.
Good afternoon, Madam Speaker and senators. My name is Vincent Minatoya. I came in 1985 to run cocos with DHL, and since then, I've made Guam my home. I lived with the Chamorro people in Mariso for many years, and I got to know I'm in support of Ron's. I'm in support of Ron Leguanyan. I've lived with the Chamorro people for many years, and I've met Ron when I was going to Gold's Gym in, again, up in the north, and I got to know him, and I really began to see a lot of the Chamorro people that I moved from Mariso, I moved to the north, and I realized that, you know, he was very like all the people that I met in Mariso. He is a fisherman, a farmer, a Chamorro advocate. I've seen his talk show, and I realize he is fully for the people. I trust Ron with all my heart. I really admire the way that he is a family man, and I'm quite sure that Ron would be very good at what being a Chamorro Land Trust Board member. I'm quite sure with all the years of his ability, he'll do a good job in his position. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Minatoya. Mr. Earl Garido, also a commissioner on the CLTC.
Hafadeh, and good afternoon to the esteemed Speaker of the 37 Guam Legislature, Theresa Terlaihi, and the honorable senators in attendance, Senator Brown and Senator Tytegui. I thank you for allowing me, Earl Garido, I'm here in my own capacity as a concerned citizen. I appear before this august body, I come before you today to give testimony in behalf of Ronald T. Leguanyan, the nominee for the Guam Ancestral Land Trust Commission on his renewal for his next four years. As the nominee of the Guam Ancestral Land Trust Commission, Ronald Leguanyan's passion for protecting and preserving ancestral lands will serve as an invaluable asset to the commission. His deep connection to the land and his understanding of the importance of preserving Guam's heritage for future generations makes him the ideal candidate for this important role. Allow me to open my testimony with my definition of leadership and integrity. The characteristic of a good leader may vary, but here are some common traits that are often associated with effective leadership. Integrity. A good leader should possess strong moral and ethical principles, like knowing right from wrong and consistently acting in accordance with those values. Conviction. It's important for a leader to have strong beliefs and stand up for what they believe is right. This can inspire others and create a sense of purpose within the team or organization. Legitimacy. Leaders who speak from the heart and are genuine in their actions tend to earn trust and respect of their followers and peers. Being true to oneself and transparent in communications can foster strong relationships. Service-oriented. Good leaders prioritize the need and well-being of their team members. They're willing to serve and support others rather than seeking personal gain or glory. Strong values. Leaders with ingrained values provide a consistent moral compass for their team. This helps guide decision-making and promotes a sense of unity and shared purpose. Resilience. Effective leaders are able to persevere through challenges and setbacks. They demonstrate resilience and inspire others to do the same, creating a positive and determined environment. Empathy. A good leader understands and cares about the feelings, needs and perspective of others. They're able to listen actively, show compassion and consider diverse viewpoints. It seems that Ronald T. Leguanyan possesses many of these characteristics, if not all, based on the descriptions provided. However, it is important to note that leadership is a complex and multifaceted concept, and these traits are not exhaustible. In closing, I have known Ron T. Leguanyan's family for decades. His family's upright and moral in their convictions, the family's patriarch instilled deep moral values in their upbringing. Ron knows right from wrong and is morally motivated to stand up for right. Ron speaks from his heart and will defend his convictions for himself and others. Ron continues to serve and brings to the table moral and ingrained values. Ron stands for righteous conviction, with right being his standard benchmark. Ronald T. Leguanyan embodies these qualities to the highest degree. His dedication to serving the people of Guam and his advocacy for the preservation of ancestral lands is evident in his actions. Unwavering commitment to his community, his leadership and integrity have been evident throughout his career and his involvement with numerous community organizations, including the Ancestral Land Trust Committee. I urge the esteemed members of the 37 Guam Legislature to consider and support Ronald T. Leguanyan's qualification and his dedication to the people of Guam when making your decisions. Remember that true leaders are not always the ones with the loudest voices, but the ones who lead by example and have the best interest in our community at heart. Thank you for your time and consideration, and may we continue working towards a future that honors and preserves the rich heritage and ancestral lands of Guam. Sisus Massey. Thank you all.
Sisus Massey. Commissioner Garido? Colleagues, is there any questions for any member of this panel? Maybe with the exception of Director Birch, are you able to stay for a while? All right, thank you. So with the exception of the director, are there any questions for any members of this panel? All right, so Sisus Massey, I want to thank you all for your testimony, and for those who are serving on the board, Sisus Massey for that service as well on the commission. All right, we're gonna hear now from any of these people who wants to testify. Sure. Bency Pablo, David Duñez, Robert Celestial, Zenon Ballenger and Peter Santes. Is there anyone else not on this list who would like to testify? Okay, Mr. Duñez, you're first.
I'm first? Bummer. Okay. Thank you, Madam Speaker, Senator Brown, thank you, nice seeing you, Senator Tello Tytegui. It's a pleasure to be here in support of a dear friend, affectionately known to be just as Ronald. He's a, I've known Ronald for, I'm kinda dating myself, over 50 years. And with the people here today providing oral testimony, I think it's a clear indicator how well Ronald has done in his capacity as a board member with the Ancestral Land Commission. I'm not gonna take too much time, I just wanna convey my support, and I would encourage the senators sitting here today and those that are not here to reappoint Ronald to the Ancestral Land Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duñez. Mr. Celestial?
Hafadeh, buenos, my name is Robert Celestial. Speaker Terlaihi, Senator Brown, Senator Tytegui. I'm here in support of Ronald T. Leguanyan to be reappointed in the Guam Ancestral Commission. I really believe that everybody said all the good accolades for Mr. Ron Leguanyan. I'll keep this short.
I'm sorry, Mr. Celestial, just a minute. Something must be wrong. We'll hold on for audio if you don't mind.
I broke it?
Okay, we're good.
Okay, do I begin or?
Please begin.
Okay. My name is Robert Namoli Celestial. I'm here to support Mr. Ron T. Leguanyan for the Guam Ancestral Land Commission. I've known him for many, many years, and it is true what each and every one of these gentlemen before me has spoken. He loves the community, he's very forthright, and he speaks from his heart, and he's very passionate for the people of Guam. And so with that, I believe that Guam Land Commission will benefit from him being reappointed back into the commission. So thank you very much, and God bless you all.
Thank you, Mr. Celestial, and can I just say, it's so good to see you out and doing well. Glad to see you. Mr. Ballenger?
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Zenon Ballenger. I grew up in Talapago and I live in Mungmung. I'm here as a private citizen. I've known Ron's family for many, many, many years. I met Ron about six or seven years ago, when I became a member of the Young Men's League of Guam. I know I look very young, right? Anyway, his passion for the Chamorro culture and language has amazed me. On occasion, we go back and forth, and I go, you know, Ron, did you understand me? And he goes, yes. I said, that's all that counts. Okay? So I am here in support of Ron's appointment to the Ancestral Land Commission, and with his passion, I can see that he will be a very good board member. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Senator and Speaker Terlayhi, Senator Brown, and Senator Taidugui.
Thank you, Mr. Ballenger. Is there anyone else who would like to testify?
Madam Speaker, if I could, please.
Mr. Duñez?
In the beginning of my oral testimony, I forgot to give you my name and whatever.
Please.
But those who don't know me, I'm Dave, David? Call me Dave, David R. Duñez, testifying on behalf of myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the record.
Are there any questions for this panel? Thank you again for your testimony, and great to see you all. All right, so now we're going to hear from the nominee, Mr. Leguanyah. Please proceed.
How day, manilu. Si Ron O. Leguanyah zu. Matatina dinamaguf. Then manenyen tiupago pudestia. Benoyam zu. Donkulu nasalutashonu naio nestina putunida. Abay saludaha. Honorable Senora Senadora Theresa Terlayhi. Hagu yitmas gehelu girisla turanguan. Pareloki para haguloki. Honorable Senora Senadora Joan M. Brown. Donkulu nasidus maosi nagaiyo geno napodhunugzu. Parewaloki. Donkulu nagadisamentu para hago. Honorable Senora Senadora Telo T. Taidugui. Anuk gidaham zu. Sa ifamalaan man gaigi. Ifamalaan nagaiyi ifu de, then ifuet ses, nikumalamtini estina tonu. Tati na tempu kotsu mit anyus tati na tempu. Zagi nenenon. Benoyam zu salutashon ni megay todu dungi kurasonu. Sa ni ungranu nalahi kumaiyi gini. Lo man gaigi famalaan. Hamzun ni man mahgas pago. Gini ni man gaigi toru imagatonta. Antide betutuni tistigu. Zauna babenoy donkulu nagadisamentu. I man taotahu ni man mottu gini, za man tistigu. Ki primera director si John Birch. Gidadirictor ge komishon. I mananata na tonu sia. Si Fred Bodadzu. I amiguta ni hagasamatu ngoham. Si gundu gehelu ge komishon para haguloki salutashon. Ron E. Clavea. Para haguloki. Kompaleku hali Dave Herrera. Gidagehulu ge komishon man taotahu. I amigugu si Vince. Vince, donkulu nagadisamentu Vince, nipenato mo. Parewaloki para si Earl. Gidaloki membru ge tanu mananata. Itsalutasid Dave Duñez. Ni matistigu amigugu. Saludu para hago. Parewaloki para si Robert Celestial. Gidaloki gehelu gagesmami ge nasion tamoru. Then si Zenon Ballenger yatsalutak ge nenelalahin guan. Babementi na anye specialmenti. Sa tatkelu eno na attention. Gidagau naman anuk gini za man tistigu pa masupotyo. Ipomalu namanilu ni man gaigi gini loki zauna babementi sia. Sa ginensia dumiridihu mona nipabekalamtini estime naole kitano. Para man naole kitautauta. Ni man clasmetu gi Jeff Clayclass sheti sheti. Si Denise, si Arlene, si Jerry, si Peter, and si Deva talu. Ipomalu namanatungohu gini tati. Yat salutasia. Si May Ada. Girera gosjanya loki mumu manahami ge nasion tamoru. Si Ronat, si Ronat Fajin tingwa astisha man taotahu. Babenoyam zu donkulu nagadisamentu. Then sidus maosi. Si galaga teti loki geno. Manahame loki gi mesun tamoru. Si Ed, ekua si Ed timalago lo agastudanteku si Ed. Untugidza loki kamakas gini. Ufasingi pa ufatisigu lengna tisinya. Sa gidagegini kalan tisinya atogu geno. Megay namanatungohu kukumbida za manaiyi. Gaigui loki skolustailuhu gini. Skolus, dan i asagau si Jeanette, dan si Kathy, man gatongya. Si gigi sia, si AJ. Si Mary, asagun Ron. To du samzu le. Donkulu nasidus maosi unnamisina lagohu. Za ta'zan no tagi tumai gini. To du tempo mafatu ban tistigu. Lo ta'zan namatugini pa matistigu zizu. Usasengan gifino ta maniluhu. Sa ginenenzu namanenyen tiu mona malolofani haga. I man taotauta gini ni palabrosta. Enigi ilingwahi ni tanu. Kada ogen makmottazu. Za u muzongo za uspiya itenanum sia. Itano importante za. Gini, Senora Gehelu. Gini mamela nakotsu anyus. Nikumu maseri napabataotzungini. Ben si guru nabai. Natiu falofan estina tonu sta. Guatugipama chulekwan. Bastet man bendi tonu. Bastet man manuli tonu. Yat gigi. Angipatafana sebi patana sebi ni hafa usata menalagota. Lo munahit man bendi. Utungana megay, megay kwestionani para manu gatu isbita. Ta gini, za ta gini. Ko para mafan pa matbenditaanu. Tiusupoti para man bendi. Bastahit man bendi. Angipamanasebi, tanama atkila. Yat gigi ma sasumoga itano gidahita. Enigi i mostatkelu pago babey tsogui napabek. Hasutadunggi kurasonu. Zani man membru sia loki ge komishon. Napata tsogui man naole. Samagai kumusi gi hitman naio huzung tonu. Para esti ta gini, ta gini. Ta'za balita kumu komishon. Manliyu manana. Za makat sa esti politika makat. Guana bainat naman aa bakit sapata supoputi esti napatida estina taotau. Leputiputpatitida zu maniluhu. Be Baba, i kurasonu. Butsuma si matahu. Napata protehi estisha na tonu. Bastahit magai. Ta susteni tanu. Para i man mamela xana hine rason. Sa distiki manhula zu ge nasion tamoru. Anema fotma hamni man nasion tamoru. Gidurantinonge dan si Ed, funtu Ed. Iini fresi. Ti gininas doctor dumkaha zu na fumotma ginini nasion tamoru zu. Na intewi zu. Za yat gigi namanhula zu. Na ginini mostatkelu gi hinasoku. I mostatkelungi kurasonu. Zani masfigu nanina senyahu. Nahugu fresen maisazu naparabeprotehi. Zanu defendi. Ihinengi. I katura. I lengwahi. I airi ihanum. Zani tanu tamoru. Ni irensaku diretsu ginina zuu stata. Estihu afitma gehelu i biblia. Zan vaniraho i banderangguan. Yat gigi natumata zu. Sen importante napata protehi talu. Za kumonoio nesti talu i mamela kotsu na anyus nganak mamam geno. Lo makat ne para tapansiga ne man adagaw zani pumalu. Be admiti eno. Lo. Be tatsu. Za be epuk i pumalu namanilo. Da bastahit man naio huzung tonu. Para i kubetnu. Para eha zisha man gawlu para tatzuli tati. Za tanoi man uri not na duenyu. Yat gigi sia tanoi. I uri not na duenyu. Zan zangit tisinya pestana podung gidahita. Ta kumu crown lands. Enigi istana mimisin ni lagohu to duzisha. I kantusnia. Bena mataknao. Senora. Za babetatsu za. Ya za namimisin alagohu sta pago. Za kado atan itano. Kada dia malolofanu gini rilitasi. I man malofan xana manilutan i man mota ista. Za nesti man dididi ayat ista. Man tamoru ista man dididi, besta man manaha naoi. Ista kontu tetenanista. Za ifamogonta sempri u kinatgasdi. I man nieta, i man nietu. I bisnieta, dan i man bisnieta. Ta protehi, ta susteni. Bis gineneno babey opiafa na kwestion. Para unfasin zu. Za babey opia talu lai gifino ta. Za enigi manongiun na ginini finota. Ginini finu mananata. Enigi nagaiyi ispiritu. Za enigi namalalaknus ginini kurasonu. Za enigi manalagonya. I mananata patana sebi tatafanlaakla gini. Kumuhitan i man tamoru. Sidus Maasi, za eno wa za ginafa na kwestion. Putabot dogamogi.
Sidus Maasi, Mr. Leguanyah. Thank you also for being willing to serve on this commission again after all these years. And I guess I was just curious, when they said 20 years, I wasn't aware of that. But were you one of the first commissioners?
Oh, yeah.
Are you?
Oh, I think so.
Okay. I have a couple of questions, and then I'll open it up for the others. First of all, I ask this of all the nominees. Do you have any conflict that would impede on your ability to serve on this commission?
Ta'za lo. Ya za i. I may toku nieta dan nietu xana impipilangi gima. Yat gigi specialmenti famogun, ifamogunu. Yat gigi naguana baina ti mafatu papa gi fisina ne. Samamu mulanam. Impapoksa ifamogun momi. Ifamogun, ifamogunu. Gua xia kotsu, guana kotsu singku man mafatu gatu gima. Za enigi maasu atetendi. Lo mananuka, anukazu gi sugunzu. Lo enna maas, lo gi ripurafa na politika para banda ta'za.
No business interest in a land that might be leased by the Ancestral Lands Commission?
Ta'za interesu gi.
Okay. All right, or vice versa, okay. And what about? Obviously, I think we're in a unique time right now where the mission of the Ancestral Lands Commission is, I'm not going to say being questioned, but it's definitely kind of like, we have to decide whether this Ancestral Lands Commission is going to, how long is it going to go on? How much are we going to be able to accomplish? We've heard testimony in other bills where, you know, they're citing the Public Law 106-504, that's the federal law that said at, you know, once the land is returned to the government of Guam, it cannot be returned to ancestral land owners. And we heard this testimony from the Director. And he's citing the public law and the analysis done by some legal parties. There's also been articles written and other opinions made about, you know, really the applicability of that for all potential ancestral lands. And then we know that we continue to have a process where the government of Guam, through Gida, and then the Governor, are supposed to identify which lands they believe are excess, send that to the Department of the Navy. The Department of the Navy, through the Secretary of the Navy, responds and says which lands he or she agrees is excess and are able to be returned. And any conditions on the return. So, there are actual documents listing these lands. And we have seen few in the past few years, but there are some. And so I guess I just want to ask you, as a Commissioner, are you aware of the status of those lands? My understanding is that the lands that have been returned in the recent years have not been deeded to the Ancestral Lands Commission. But are you, as Commissioners, tracking those lands and able to, I don't know, advocate for their either passage to the Ancestral Lands Commission or not?
Dinanchao, Madam Speaker. Gua xia listan tonu ni huli na ista man masopta gatu gi ka'guan talu. Za hagasomenti no gi dirictor. Na ya za na tonu sia. Guaha xia man gaitanu. Za umentia, za manoi tati i man uri not na duenyu. Lo gineneno na lista, babey tsonik eno. Zani komishon, za be gogow sinapotiniasi i komishon. Za manoi tati. Enigi finenena tanoi tati i man uri not na duenyu. Sa gua xia huhunguk na para manai mahotxane. Ta tifabotu eno. Sa naoi duenyu, i diretsu nia ni hagaszun nia. Za sia odinitit mina hafamalagunia ni tanu. Lo ginenenzu baben guaduk eno maas, za ni gehelu. Gehelu Ron, ni sitaspias di Ron. Saluta. Sa guaha xia listan size fanan na tonu ni man masoptanu Ron. Pia de za papa za USO. Za ma keke entriga gatu gi mahot. Lo. Ti ginenenzu na plono ne na timanarsana wam. Lo ben spiampeniu pa benpanyawnu gi eno na plono. Enigi lelekta, utungafa lelekmu Speaker. Ya za na tonu. Ta susteni tanu. Ta tanai tati man uri not na duenyu. Za angintisinya tanai uri not na duenyu. Ta tsoda, pas ta susteni kumu crown lands. Yat gigi. Be pumeteu eno ta be mumuzi, Madam Speaker. Babemumuzi eno na sultu. Gini gi mamela na kotsu anyus.
I think at the very minimum, yeah, we need to be aware, and the commission needs to be aware. The commission needs to answer as to whether they think they need to get involved in those things or not.
Esta.
But the... So, there are properties that are already in your inventory. There are crown lands in your inventory. There's lands that have been deemed returnable to ancestral land owner. They've been, the claims have been adjudicated, they're ready, but we have not been able to locate those landowners. And I guess, so, you know, we've had several oversights. And the last list that I remember is, let me see.
Xian dozu.
At that, yeah. 108, yeah. So, has there been any progress? Do you see progress being made on that? And if not, is there a solution that the land, Ancestral Lands Commission, is going to propose as to how to address those that are not, we're not able to contact, the 108? Have you done our best efforts? I mean, are you being diligent that the best efforts are being made to contact them?
Sidus Maasi, another question. Hungen, Senora. Entagi man publika gi gaseta. Za ta'za risutu lo pago baben dekano maas talu. Za baben sigatzumagi. Pia pago baben spiata manu pago gi internet. Entagi gi internet. Lo baben entagi pago ma xaki Facebook, to du share internet. To du no sia i Instagram, pa ma xafa na klasit ne. Lo babey fasina i dirictor talu, John. Ta spiampeniu, ta tsonik talu zu. Ta ta'aligo edzi man uri not xana duenyu. Za ma klamatati itano nia. Enigi, Senora.
For many years, and I just wanted to get a little more insight. And you know, I have to apologize because my, you know, my Chamorro is not very good. And I want to make sure I get everything precise on what you say, especially so if I can ask you just to say it in English and then you can spank me later for, you know, and make me go to class after this, I will do so if you want, Roland, because I know you always encourage me to learn my Chamorro and that, you know, I'm an old lady right now and set it in my ways. Anyways, with regards to Gaelic, what is the, your, your take on, you know, the development of, of properties, you know, with the properties that you have now, that, not just the ground leasing, but the properties that you have now, what is your, your outlook or what do you plan on pursuing on, on these development of properties?
Yes, it's just my senior, yeah, we have the, we have the power to do it, to invest and become investors. And that, that's one of the plans of our chairman was to, rather than to outright lease, we want to partner and become part of the, as a business, to get involved like, so that we can get the maximum benefit and earnings on those leases, on the lease.
And where does this money go? What, what account does it go into when, when you develop these properties?
We prefer, we, you put it into the land bank.
Okay, and how much is in your land bank right now again?
About sixteen million.
Sixty million, right? Okay. And I know the speaker was asking about when are you going to have the opportunity to start paying some of those properties that will never be returned back to our, our people or the original owners. And, you know, I haven't heard any of that money being spent. What is your plan on wanting to get this money out to those who will never see their land?
First, we have to clarify who the beneficiaries are. Because the first beneficiaries that, that we see that deserve payment are the Tizen landowners and the, the National Guard properties, because those are in the hands of the government. All the other lands are still under federal control. And we are in conflict because there is a proposed bill from the governor that wants to include all dispossessed landowners. And once we use that definition, it'll be, it wouldn't be enough to satisfy the original landowners and the dispossessed landowners.
Okay, you said the governor, right? Includes all displaced landowners and of course--
That's, that's how I understand the bill.
Is that in law?
Well, it's a proposed bill, I believe.
Okay, but it's not in law currently?
Not in law.
Okay, let's say that, that does not go through. What is your plan on getting those monies to those individuals at Tizen and National Guard?
That's, that's going to be the first priority--
Okay.
--according with our chairman. We've discussed that with our chairman. And we would like to address that with the rest of the other commission members.
Okay, have you ever made any movement at all? I mean, on, on that?
Well, it's in the hands of--
Other than just reading about it?
It needed legislation.
Okay, have you provided proposal to the--
I would like to ask the status of that, Mr. Chair--
Okay, please.
No, I can tell you, are you talking about the governor's legislation?
No, I'm just talking about what, what the commission is doing to move forward with something, I mean, we, we hear a lot of talk, you know, over the years, it's always been a lot of talk, a lot of talk, and no real action is being done. And, and that's what's so frustrating, you know, and it's not just me, it's those who, you know, are waiting for this compensation.
We are aware--
It's just talk, 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 but no action. So I want to hear the action. I want to hear the timeline.
We are aware of that, and I will have our--
Director Berg, would you like to answer that?
Yes. Back in 2017, a proposed rules and regulations were submitted to the Attorney General's office, and it was rejected. Part of the, the issue back then was the confusion of beneficiaries. I'm glad the speaker's come up with her definition. That would work, of course, the commission is still pretty much the same people sitting on it that feels that all people who lost their property should be beneficiaries of the land bank. What I say we should do is we should have a round table, sit down, talk this thing out, and make a decision once and for all how we're going to approach this, this issue. According to the AG, it needs legislative action. And so a bill was submitted here. And of course, the bill says one thing, but that bill can be changed, it's simply a proposal, and how it comes out in law, at least to meet even the other issues that were brought up. I don't have my list of what they are, but I remember listing about four, four issues. And one of them was the beneficiaries. There are three other issues offhand, I can't tell you exactly what they were. The AG's opinion was quite lengthy as to why they rejected the initial rules and regulations that were created in 2017.
What's the status on those rules and--
If I could, Senator, yes, so the rules were rejected because they were not consistent with the law. And that's correct, the primary reason they weren't is because the commission at that time made rules to make beneficiaries out of everyone who had land currently possessed by the federal government. And that was not in the law yet. So that's how it became, oh, we need to change the law, or you need to comply with the law, right? That's really what's before the commission. And there are other minor things, like if we change or the beneficiaries, or even if you're going to compensate the beneficiaries, are you going to give them money and then how much, right? And then are their claims extinguished? Or are you going to keep paying them while, this new class of beneficiaries, where you're going to keep paying them while their land is being possessed, right? And it, it was that, it had opened up a whole new can of things, which, so now we have a new proposal. So that, that was like rules sent to the AG rejected because they didn't conform with the law. There's a new proposal to change the law from the governor, that's called, we're calling it the Land Bank Bill. And that's going to have a hearing maybe next month, early in February. But that is really something, I don't think the commission has voted on this term, but that's where we need clarification. And that's where I'm trying to get a hold of landowners to see their input, because I think it's very important, right? If they are going to advocate that we expand this law or not, and if so, we're, we're going to, that's why we keep putting that hearing off, is because when we try to contact these landowners, we're not getting a good catch of all the landowners. And I think it's very imperative that they are notified. We are, we have a good list of them because it affects them very much. It changes the pot of what's currently in your, in your bank. You've got money, sixteen million, I think, eleven million, sixteen million, plus, you know, whatever you get in the lease, if, if that property's leased, a hundred acres. So that's your pot. Are you able to distribute that right now to your current beneficiaries? Or do you need to grow that? And how big do you need to grow that in order to pay off that other list of potential beneficiaries? For me, that's a big question, because that might, that, that's, we've been heard, we've heard, that's pennies on the dollar, or pennies, right? And so if that's the case, yeah, very tough decisions, but the landowners need to know. Sorry, Senator, thank you.
No, no, thank you, that's very informative. Well, there's obvious a lot of questions that were, are stemming from what's anticipated, and that is, you know, how much is going to be paid to them, and certain other questions that I think the, the commission can at least begin that dialogue. I know, Director, you mentioned about having a round table, you know, sit down in round table. I hope that, you know, that sooner than later, you know, again, we're talking again. But if we can just get a timeline, you, the commission to sit down with a timeline to say, okay, we're going to start this, we're going to answer these questions, we're going to put this into play, the public hearing is anticipated for be, to be this time, let's make sure we, we give our opinions from the commission on, on that particular bill. I don't know if you guys had a sit down on the bill that's coming up, the land bank bill? I don't think so. So I, I just think we need to move a little faster here, because a lot of us are getting older and, you know, it's unfortunate that I'm sure we're on like the third generation who's been waiting and anticipating, third generation, you know, for some kind of, you know, compensation or, you know, recognition that this land was taken and was told they would be compensated for, and it's not. That's sad. I mean, land is precious. Money, you can go out and make money, but land, it's a different story altogether. So I know you've been sitting on this, and I have to ask you, you know, because I, I don't really try and favor anybody when they're sitting in front of me for confirmation, and I've been known to be a real hard, hard person by certain people that real tough on it, but you've been sitting on the board for twenty years, Roland? Is that right?
Yes.
That's a long time.
Yeah.
A very long time. And I, though continuity is very important, especially with the land bank, because you know what's happened in the past and the trials and tribulations, so that you try not to make the same mistake. But I also look at trying to bring in the breath of fresh air, new perspective, new ideas, you know, and are you one to always come to these public, to these meetings?
Senator, I am one of seven. And at times, it just, you know how it is, there's these, the battles on the, on the grounds become overwhelming, but I always stand up for the return of lands to the original landowners. And at times, those challenges just face upon us, and we try our very best to do the right thing. And, and, and we will continue to fight that battle despite the, the challenges low. You know, my heart is to the original landowners, because I am myself, my, my, my family of, we are Tizen landowners, we have fourteen point five acres. I've been sitting in the board for twenty years, and yet my family has not gotten anything due to these conflicts that we encounter and the challenges from administration to administration. But we try our very best. And you know my heart is on that. We are, we are trying to generate as much monies so that we can give to the original landowners something, or perhaps even land exchange. We're even thinking about purchasing lands. If it comes to the sales of lands that we have no control, that has already been taken, we want to use such monies to buy more lands. That's another idea, so that we can utilize those lands and give it out somehow. But we're trying our best. That's what I'm trying our best, because you know, like you said, the lands are sacred and important, but, but it's just hard that I'm one, and--
One of seven.
Yeah, perhaps, maybe--
Probably the loudest one, too.
If you can give me the throne on that name.
And definitely you're the loudest of the seven.
Yeah, but I try, I try my very best, but at times--
Well--
--there's conflict, and you know that, too.
Yeah, conflict of interest.
You have that here, too, in this forum, and, but we, we try our very best to become civil and work around it, and then do our very best, because I, yeah, like I said, I myself am an heir to the Tizen land, and we've yet gotten any relief on that.
Well, there's no doubt about it, Roland, and I, I know your passion--
Yeah.
--you know, for the people and the land. And I know that when conflict of interest comes about in your, in your capacity, that you would, you would step aside for that conflict. I'm hoping you still have those morals intact, and I think you do. But I'm asking you right now that, as you get older, you know, that you need to bring in some, one who may take your place one day.
No.
And I'm asking that you, you find somebody, the next generation, to keep that passion, that fire burning that's been in your heart for twenty years and trying to help the people of Guam, and try to give, you know, restore what was taken from them. But I ask that you meet with these younger generations and teach them. Let them sit on the board, let them bring new perspective and ideas on how to make this work. So that's all I ask for you on your, on this next term of four years to do. If you can, please do that, you know, find somebody who has that same fire, you know, looking for it. Other than that, I appreciate all you do, and Director Berg as well. I know you guys are under a lot of hot, hot plates here and--
Yeah.
--fire under your feet being burned, especially with this hospital scenario that you're still dealing with. I'm not even going to go there right now, you know, that's a long story itself. Yeah, that's for another time. But again, I thank you, and you know, Roland, I don't say it very quickly when, on confirmations, but you do have my support.
Sisus Masie.
Thank you.
Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and good afternoon to you, Mr. Laguana. I think all of us have known you a long time, some longer than others, and I thank your family and your friends and your supporters for being here. You could run for anything, because you have so many people here that, that believe in you. You know, when you were reciting the Enfresi, you know, we say it, a lot of people say it, because it sounds good, and in Chamorro, it sounds even better, but do they believe it and do they have true conviction? I don't meet a lot of people, of my own people here, that have that much conviction. And it's disturbing to me, because I see so much that's for sale. Principles for sale, convictions for sale, lands for sale. And you see the change in a generation so quickly, that our, our children, grandchildren that are coming after us will not anywhere have the influence of what it means to be Chamorro, what it means to value the land and the environment that we have inherited. A lot of people talk about it, it's very easy to speak, requires such little effort. Actually, following through is very rare. That includes those of us that are even up here on this side of the aisle. I don't see it very often, and I've been at it a long time. And so I appreciate the fact that you do have such conviction and you speak out. I, I hope we have more people, and as Senator Tello mentioned, the need to influence the next generation, because they don't have the same oppor, they didn't have the same opportunities we had growing up. And as each generation goes, goes along, it's like that influence has become diluted. And so how we value land now is, you know, I have conflict as I look at this, because the desire is to receive compensation or hopefully return the lands back to the original landowners, but you know, the titles aren't even dry before the land is sold to outside interests. That's a standard. I mean, for what land I will receive from my grandfather through my mother, I will never sell. And I tell my son, I will not allow him to inherit it if he doesn't value it, because I, I just, I don't see that the same way. Money comes through your hands like water, no matter how much it is, and you can always earn it, and you can always make enough to live. Maybe not live like a millionaire or billionaire, but you can make enough to live. But that's the challenge that we have. And so while I see the need definitely, and I totally support, especially for those that have had their lands taken, because I can't imagine someone coming in and taking my property, and I'm disinherited from it, my children are, and there's no compensation or return of that land. And it's happened to many of our people, as we know, because of our, because of our history, our unfortunate history that we've had. So I appreciate your continued conviction to that. But you know, the other reality is, as I see it, it's become currency. Land is currency. And our people, sad to say, some of our people don't value it. You know, the lands that our grandparents that lived through the war, or some parents, maybe your parents, me in my case, it's my grandparents, you know, it's dollars and cents to many of our generation. We have no connection to it. We've never had to work it. We've never had to live off the land. So, you know, somebody comes and offers you a few hundred thousand dollars, and we're standing, yes, please, I'm going to go to America, because I'm a better Chamorro in America, right? So I appreciate your, your testimony, your conviction in relaying that. But yes, I agree with my colleagues, I think we need to see progress with it, because time is, time is precious and it goes by quickly, and we are feeling the age, all of us are, in not seeing these issues resolved. But I appreciate the fact that you do what you do, and it's not just sitting on the commission, but you know, even getting on the radio and, you know, teaching us how to speak the language and providing clarification on proper pronunciation and everything is appreciated, because I'm not a fluent Chamorro speaker, but I have a fairly good understanding of it, only because my grandfather would always speak to me in Chamorro. Even when I tell him, grandpa, I don't understand, and he would not stop. And I, I'm very grateful to that, because if it wasn't for him, I would have very little understanding of the language, and I wouldn't have as much appreciation. So I don't have any questions for you, Mr. Laguana. I think you're, if you have something you want to say, you're welcome to. I think you're, the support you've received today is very telling. I'm hope you, I'm sure you're appreciative of it, because not everyone has an opportunity to hear what everyone thinks about them or wants to say about them, and supporting them with the initiatives that they want to do. So I'm sure it's appreciated by you, and certainly by us, for those of you that have come to provide testimony.
Sisus Masie, Senator. Like I said, you know, it's in my philosophy that, and growing up, that what, the lands have been in our possession for over four thousand years, what makes it one generation of person to gain back that land and sell it? It's not, you're right, you're just borrowing those lands from your children and your grandchildren. These are borrowed lands. We were born with nothing, and we will die with nothing. We're just borrowing these lands. That's how sacred this, I, I put myself in those positions. I have family members that want to sell the land. I told them, I said, what makes you, in your time, your generation, within your eighty years of your life, or whatever, it's not to be sold, it's supposed to be held in trust for generations to come. And I, that's, that's how I, I care about land. So after four thousand years of ancestral lands, and then once we give it out, you're correct, we see it either sold or being stored for automobiles, and it becomes a total mess, but we have no control of that. But we try to instill that in our children, to value the land and protect the land, because we're just borrowing it from our ancestors. And those are for the children, your children, your grandchildren, and further on. And I talk to my, my family, we're borrowing these land, these lands do not belong to us. These will be here for thousands of years more. I want you to sell it, and you see it already. The Chinese are buying out all the land, left to right, I just watch it down the line. And they're smart, because they buy them by parcels, and then they build it slowly so they can bypass the regulations of revenue and tax, not to pay additional taxes when it comes to bigger lots. And I see that. It's sad. We have a problem with our society, we have a problem with the world, but life is short, and I, I feel for the way we're trying to view with these matters, you know? We only pray to God. And there's so much, so much problems in the world. Why can't we just use, build, get the land like, get a hundred by hundred and build a chapel and a church, and let's all pray for peace and harmony? But I'm, I'm so glad that you are with me, senators. I try to do my best. And I tell them, so just outright, many times, I just tell them right, right there. And I take notes, because when it comes to those points, they cannot tell me that they didn't say that. And I say it, that you did, you said this and said that, so let's, let's, let's stop that. And I'm there to stop the sale of these lands.
You know, and the irony is, you end up having family members fight over something that they have put no effort to receive.
Yeah.
Yeah, they end up quarreling, huh? And families end up breaking up as a result of it.
Yeah, it breaks families, but--
Unfortunately, the greed, to me, is more disrespectful than anything else. And I, greed motivates like nothing I've ever seen, unfortunately, and I, you know, I've lived on Guam most of my life, and I have to tell you, it, it's disheartening. So I hope your message resonates out there. I hope that's something we can pass on to the younger people, because once you, once we lose the land, we have no, you know, it, it's not going to be, you know, it's not, we can't say, oh, that is Chamorro, because it's not ours anymore. We're lucky if we get to lease it or rent it, right? So I, again, Mr. Laguana, I appreciate your passion and your conviction, and please keep doing what you're doing, because there's a lot of our people out there that don't get that message, and their own families sometimes, because families now are so divided. I mean, we grew up knowing who, who is who. Young people now, they don't have that, they don't have the same connection, and, and like you were talking earlier, they don't have the same connection to land. Money is very fleeting, but if we don't, if we don't make that effort, and, and ourselves have our own sense of conviction, who, who, how do we pass it on when we don't have it ourselves to pass on? So you certainly have my support, I wish you continued success, you have a tough job. I know Mr. Birch has a tougher job, dealing with this and right now, the land, the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. But you know, we have to keep doing and setting that example, because maybe we can change the tide, because it's disturbing to me, it really is. I'm bothered by it. I, I just, as I see it, and you're right, the Chamoros, I mean, I look at, I look at my family land that hasn't even been subdivided, and there are offers being made left and right to buy it, and for years. And I go, it's not a question for me, I don't care what the value is, I would never personally sell it, because to me, that is my inheritance in my family, and something I value, not so much the land, but the fact that it's come to me from my, my ancestors, and I appreciate that, because it's our inherited property. But like I said, you know, before the title name is even there, it's, it's for sale. I mean, we look at the, what, what, what few large land holdings are remaining on Guam as soon as they're divided. It's not something being passed on to their children, unfortunately. But with that, Madam, Madam Speaker, thank you for the opportunity to make a comment. Certainly, Mr. Laguana, you certainly have my, my vote of support. Thank you.
Just one last comment, Senator. That's why they testify in Chamorro, because with the, with the language, that speaking of the language are the words of our ancestors, and you pass that on to our children. And that's how they connect with their island and their culture and their people, to the language. And with that, that's why you see there's a revitalization now of many of the young generation that are moving forward with the language and the culture and the fight for the protection of our island and our people. Money will disappear, but the land will still be there. Then you look back, and I see people sold their lands, and they came back, went to relocate to the States, and they came back and they bought back their lands, triple the price, because they found out that the connection is with that land, that particular land in Tamuning. They sold it, they had to rebuy it back three, four times the cost, because the land, they realized was sacred, ancestral lands. And that's sad, that that thing had to happen like that. So Sisus Masie, Senator. Sisus Masie Lokitama.
Sisus Masie, Senators, and, and Mr. Laguana. Before we close, I'd just like to, so I want to commend you for your work, especially for this many years. And I know many of the testimony included the word trust. They trust your judgment, they trust your advocacy, they trust that you're, you know, going to represent them. And so I respect that, and I, I want you to continue to serve in that capacity. But the ancestral lands commission, like I said, I feel we're in a very important time, and it's, it's a generational thing. What was given to us by those who worked before us, what are we going to do with it now, right? Are we changing our minds about how important that is or something?
We've got to work on it.
And so there are things, there are, there are bad debts, we're not collecting what we're supposed to be collecting, and the audits have shown that, and the you commissioners are, need to drive this, all right? I know you hire an executive director, that's up to the commissioners, who you're going to put in that spot. And so you, you know, I know that throughout the government, it kind of works like whoever's the director, they, they manage the agendas, they manage how things are going to flow, and what the priorities are going to be. But I would think that particularly you, and those who have served for as long as you have, this is something that cannot wait any longer. We're getting old, many reasons, I'm not, I don't have to explain. You know, you know how urgent it is, and you know whether we are going to change or we're going to continue--
Yeah.
--to remind people the importance of these lands. So bad debt, I think, have we seen a resolution in support of Bill 180, well, to lease or sell that land, a hun, a hun, sixty-four or a hundred acres over there at Agaga, to the government of Guam, for, but the governor wants to build a hospital. So there was a resolution in that regard. I have not seen a resolution-- So there was a resolution in that regard. I have not seen a resolution in regards to the land bank, but that, I think we're going to have a hearing, so you can testify on that. But I think the commissioners need to pay close attention to the list of returned lands, or, yeah, returned lands, lands that have been returned, and what's happening with those if they're not coming to you. Lands that are supposed to be returned, because, like I said, we have lists, lands that have been deemed excess, but maybe, and you should monitor that, because in the next list, the next year, is that continued to be deemed excess? Or has somebody changed their mind, right? I'd like to keep an eye on that myself, but I'm saying you are the commissioners kind of assigned to carry this. Lease proceeds that are used for operations, and I know this is kind of one of the debates that you guys have, the leases that you have, if you use that money for operations, less money to the beneficiaries. That's your dilemma. When are we going to pay the beneficiaries? I know we'd all like to find a way where, when you do return land, we can help these landowners, like a way to invest it, a way to get leases on it, so that they can hold it and not have to sell it. This is decades. It's a generation of being dispossessed of land has created poverty. It has created despotness. It's created, you know, the lack of attachment, the different values. So these are symptoms, you know, of what happened to us when the lands were taken. As to your board, maybe, Mr. Director, can you just answer, are there any other vacancies on the board?
There'll be two more coming up, Commissioner Westling and Commissioner Camacho. Their 90 days have expired, and when you go into session this month, that'll be the third legislative day. So with the confirmation of Mr. Leguano, we will still have a quorum where we can operate. I'm hoping that the two commissioners will agree to be reappointed. I believe Commissioner Westling, she's informed me that she has problems with health issues within her family, and she may not be interested. I will try to reaffirm that if that's her decision.
With them, you had no other vacancy?
No, not, yes, not at this time, but we will be having two.
Okay. And then, so, Mr. Leguano, I also want to tell you that you have many letters that have been sent in on your behalf. Lisa Mosher, Von Leguano, Ted Nelson, Mary Perez Williams, Jacinta Perez, Jerry Flores, Bob Pelkey, Mary Ogun, Denise Cruz, Elizabeth Maggie, I think, Tenorio, Peter Terlai from Santa Rita, Dorothy Leguano, Lou Ogunsholti, and Rosemarie Panzalan Herrera. And again, thank you to all of you who testified today. Thank you.
Madam Speaker, perhaps, Mr. Birch, with regards to the deeding, if we can, once we start deeding these properties, we can probably include, I don't know how far we can get on reverberatory clauses. That's how the military has done it.
Good point.
Yeah, that they said that it's either you use it this way, or we take it back. But these are ancestral lands, I guess, and to encourage them not to sell. I don't know how we're going to work with that, that once it's private property that belongs to them, what control can we have on that? But we try to encourage them not to sell all the time. We tell them that.
Yes.
You know.
I know. We can find other ways. That would be probably, you know, different effort by the government, different statutes. However, yeah, currently, we have our hands full with properties that are being returned, and we need to get those to those landowners. The list that you have, we have properties that we have for investment that need to be, you know, produce income.
Right.
And maybe that's how you're going to help them, when you have income and you're able to, you know, hire the lawyer you want, hire the... Anyways, so, yes, but I just think it's very important that this all stems from the process of, it's either Congress is going to say this land gets returned, or, you know, they've laid it out, that we work with the Secretary of the Navy, back and forth. You've got the list. They've deemed land excess, such as Eagles Field, when they deemed it excess. I think it's incumbent on us, then, if they've deemed it excess, that we pursue that. And if the government is not going to pursue it, I don't know. It's not necessarily your job, but I'm just suggesting that we are looking, people think that that's your job. Anyways, I commend you for your work, and I thank you. And there's no other testimony for this appointment, so I'm going to conclude this here. Mr., sorry, yeah, the chairperson of the commission?
Thank you for this opportunity to, again, make a brief analogy of what's going on. This is how we sit, notwithstanding the many years that we've struggled with the rules and regs, then realizing that it's actually not possible to actually come up legally with the rules and regs. The way the situation looks now is we have Chamorro Land Trust and ancestral lands. The conditions are now that we have beneficiaries of ancestral lands, that practically all the beneficiaries of ancestral lands are the beneficiaries of Chamorro Land Trust. But not all of the beneficiaries of Chamorro Land Trust are beneficiaries of the ancestral lands. Now, we have a situation where the government of Guam took the lands, I mean, took the released lands, some of the released lands, and we have, of course, the federal government that condemned these lands back in the 50s. So we have governmental Guam lands that were condemned, or not condemned, but kept, like Tijan and the National Guard. So government of Guam has kept these lands, but yet the situation with GALC and CLTC, it's the same, practically the same beneficiaries, but not all of CLTC qualifies. But everybody's going to get compensated the same way? Everybody? See, right now, given what we were dealt with with the rules and regs, we made everybody. Everybody were the beneficiaries, from the military, the condemned lands from the military, and the ones that the government of Guam kept. But of course, it was illegal. So however, the front office and you, the legislature, come up with who the beneficiaries actually are for ancestral lands, the fact is, the government of Guam kept some lands. And as Mr. Leguano said, they haven't received anything yet. A lot of us have gotten our lands back. A lot of us, a lot of them sold their lands.
Thank you. Mr. Ekavia, chairman?
Okay, I don't want to take up too, but you understand where we're coming at. If there's some way to have it done so that these guys that you kept the lands get compensated? Because in the end, ancestral lands, after it completes its mission, it's probably, it's going to probably go back to the CLTC.
I don't know about all of that overlap with the CLTC. I don't think that's necessarily a problem that we're having. The problem we're having is, yes, you have beneficiaries that are waiting for you as a commission to act, and we need to make sure that you are going to do that. So, and I don't think, you know, of course, you know, we want to do many different things, and those are the hard decisions that have to be made, and now we know, 20 years later.
Yep, that we struggled, that we couldn't.
So we need to get it done. So, but I appreciate. So it's going to take you guys and your work and the fellow commissioners. And I want to say, so some of these commissioners have approached me, and I'm going to encourage you to have meetings both in person and on Zoom. I know Zoom is very convenient. That's good. But I also think, you know, maybe you need to look each other in the eye once in a while, at least, and see how motivated we are to move this. That's all.
Thank you for making my comment.
All right. And so this reappointment here for Mr. Ronald T. Leguano to serve as a member of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission for four years is duly heard. Sisus Massey, todos.